All right, I will call the meeting, Deerfield Elementary School Committee to order at 5:01 now. Just to note, this meeting is being recorded and is being held in a hybrid manner. We're going to start by, oh, first of all, welcome back, everyone. I hope we all had great summers. We haven't met since May, so it feels like it's been a while. Nice to be back. All right, we're going to first review and approve the minutes of May 16th, 2024. Make a motion to approve the minutes from May 16th, 2024.
Second.
There's no, there's two pages. There's no discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes? Next up is the financial statement and Lawrence. Shelley?
Hi, everyone. Welcome back. There were 61 warrants signed since the last meeting in May. It covers a period of June 5th through September 25th, warrant that's due coming up next. Those were signed electronically totaling $909,460.06. I'm going to go over account overages on the revolving fund. If I miss anything, or not on the revolving fund, I'm sorry, on the general fund and the school choice reports that I emailed out. If I miss anything, please feel free to ask. These are actual overages that we will have to find savings from other accounts. It's not one of those ones that's false at this time of the year. Sometimes that happens with salaries, but everything that you're seeing in a negative account on the report currently is an actual budget overage for that line item. Not concerned about anything at this point in the year, and Deerfield in particular always has personnel changes throughout the year due to leaves of absence or unpaid time off that I'm positive will recoup the funds, but just to make you aware of the overages. So, under the, on the first page, under the function code for business office, which I believe is 1410, you're going to see accounting software is over. That is because we signed the contract for the renewal on our database for our bookkeeping and our payroll after budget was already approved. We never have those numbers. I typically leave them stagnant and we just sort of make up those funds every year, but it was a pretty significant increase. That's a five-way split, so it is a big cost to the district and we are looking at how we can save money on that line. For example, we have some platforms that's offered with the software that we're not using, so we'll hopefully be able to recoup some credits for that this year and bring that account negative down. District-wide technology, which is under the 1450 account, which I think is also on the bottom of page one. That account is over. I'm looking into that with our IT department and our curriculum. That covers some of the software that we use for educational purposes in the district. And there's some new accounts or new vendors this year, so I'm making sure that everything's in the right category. So that one could actually pan out. We do have some new printers in the building, so the copier line is over. We started a new lease this year and there's some different terms. This actually could end up being a savings for us because supplies and materials and labor, if there's a problem with any of the machines or if we need new anchor toner, is now included in the cost. Previously, we had to go to Staples or Amazon and buy those purchases separately, so it's a little hard to see right now if we're going to have cost savings because they were in two separate lines in prior years, but it's something that Scott Paul and I are keeping an eye on. He's our IT director, just to make sure that we're not so far over budget. But we did expect that change after budget season when we signed the new lease for copiers. Teachers are a big one that's over right now. If you look at that line, there's a significant overage in one of those teacher accounts. I think it's under the early childhood. That is because of the DEN program, but you will notice that the IA line is under significantly. So after budget was approved over the summer, Tina and Karen Ferrandino and Kim McCarthy, the special education and the early childhood directors, and team worked together to map out the staffing plan. We decided that it would be best to go with two teachers in that classroom versus one teacher, and I think it was three IAs at the time. So we sort of swapped out salaries there, so that should be a wash in the end. The teacher line might be slightly more of an overage than the IAs, but we'll be able to recoup those funds, but that's some background for you on the teacher line. The last two pieces are summer school stipends, which I believe is under function code 2440 on page four. That is an actual overlap line from the staff that we needed to fully staff our summer programs. And then the final one is related to building insurance. This is something that the town backbills us. This is on page six of the report, under non-employee insurance. Their insurance rates went up, so we're seeing an increase in that line. This is typical. We don't usually have the rates during budget season and we tend to have to make up those funds. The growth this year was pretty significant. We're over almost $7,000, so that might be something we want to add a little bit of money to next year so that we're not trying to fill such a significant gap. Anything on general fund that I didn't touch on that you still have questions about before I talk about school choice? Okay, that was a lot of information, and I know you just got the reports yesterday, so feel free, if I went too quickly or if there's something I missed, to email me. I'm happy to answer questions at any time. The school choice item that I wanted to point out for you was in regards to the building, what is it exactly? Extraordinary maintenance is what it is titled on the report. You'll see that that has, I'm sorry, building general repairs, one line up. We have a budget of $88,000 there. That is to cover the overage, part of the overage for the front entryway project payable to Omasa Landscaping as well as installation of mini splits with Camrog. We will see a rebate on those mini splits. I don't have the exact amount in front of me, but we'll put that directly back into school choice. So the mini split total is $29,000 roughly. So whatever we get back on that, we'll put back in to help replenish that fund. So that was the update on that. Any questions there? Okay, I'm going to talk quickly about revolving funds since we are reconciled with the town. Every year, we go through this process of reconciling the town books compared to the school books because technically they are the town records, not our records, but town takes our data and inputs it into their system to make sure that everything comes out checks and balanced. Sometimes we have corrections to make. Deerfield really greets their accountant and is phenomenal, and she's on top of it, so we're able to reconcile this early. So some of the other schools don't have revolving fund updates yet, but fortunately for Deerfield, we do. I'm pleased to say that overall, we're in good shape with our revolving funds. I do have some concern going into next year, so it's super early to get into details, but things that we're watching, you can see, school choice, even without the entryway project, we are exceeding revenues that are coming in. And we did have this conversation during budget season that with our classrooms getting smaller, we have less room for school choice students, so we're going to start to see this natural decline of our revolving fund balance in school choice. Based on the projections, we're just in a really good spot at almost $900,000. So, you know, we're not really concerned here yet, but it will only take a few years to eat up that significant balance if we continue to overspend at the rate we are. So, excuse me. We should have more significant conversations during budget season about that revolving fund. Early childhood is pretty balanced. You can see the projections coming in are covering the expenses going out. It's almost a wash. It's good to maintain that balance there in case we have any unforeseen expenditures come up throughout the year. It can happen. We may need, you know, an IA unbeknownst to us due to a student that has needs that we weren't anticipating. Same thing with special ed revolving, and we have a new account for the DEN revolving program. That is a new special education revolving fund. While we could combine these, I felt like it was a good idea for us with a new program to keep them separate. We can have revolving funds for this purpose, so there's no negative ramification of setting up a separate account. And I think it gives us a good way to keep an eye on the health of that program financially as we're bringing in tuition and students. So in both the LEAP program, or what was referred to as LEAP, I'm not sure if they still follow at the school level, and the DEN program, we are bringing in a student from outside of the district in each of those programs this year. That's why there is revenue in those accounts. The DEN program, we had talked about not doing that in year one. However, Tina, Kim, and Karen felt like the program was in a position where we could bring in another student given the existing students in the district. We didn't feel overloaded, so we have contracted with another town to bring in a student into that program. And you can see in both of those funds, revenue is higher than expenses, or we have good balances there. This is really important for these two funds because anything can happen at any point with specialized program when you're providing higher level of services to students with needs. So we're in a good spot there as well. And then finally, let's look at school lunch. You can see school lunch, it's self-explanatory. We've done an excellent job of reserving funds from prior years due to the full reimbursement of breakfast and lunch program and savings during COVID. We are going to have to start to spend those funds down. Deerfield was picked this year for a procurement review by DESI, so they will look at the school lunch program, all of our revenue coming in and our expenses going out, as well as our balance. This is a much higher balance than we would normally ever carry in the school lunch program. So Patrick McCarthy, our food service director, is currently doing an inventory at all schools of equipment and supplies and materials to see what who purchases or old equipment we can swap out so that we can spend some of this down. You're technically only supposed to keep three months of reserves as a balance in this fund, so we will have to make some adjustments, but right now, we're in a really good spot with that. I just, I threw a lot of information at you really quickly, so please let me know if you have questions. If not, Kiri, I don't have anything further.
I just want to say that I think keeping the LEAP and DEN programs separate financially does make sense. It will be good to see how that works. And I think being able to take in a student in the first year is a great thing. Glad it felt like the program was in a good spot for that. If there's no other comments or questions for Shelley, move on to the principal's report.
Sure, so we're off to a great start and want to thank everybody for their flexibility and patience as we navigated some active work sites our first few weeks of school. A big thank you to the police department too for helping us out, but all of the changes was worth it. Our front entrance is amazing. We did try our best to keep the school, first day of school, fun. We squished ourselves over by the cafeteria, but tomorrow, we're going to have a little bit of a redo, so hope you guys can all join us for our front entrance grand opening. I know that Darius invited you. I also don't know who decided to give kids donuts before they walked into school, but that was me, and I'll have to figure that out tomorrow. We are embracing the theme of "You Belong Here," so I kind of organized my report around that. That's our theme for the school year. I did list out the new staff who are right where they belong. And I wanted to share some of our DEI committee updates. We're kicking off a year-long initiative about making sure that everyone is feeling welcome and through a, what we would call like a whole school book club. And the themes this year are going to focus on identity, culture, community, justice, empathy, and activism. And it also brings in the diversity leadership team, which is fifth and sixth graders. They'll be kicking off the book clubs at the all-school meeting, so I did include some pictures of the books that we'll be reading as a school community. I also wanted to bring back our behavior and culture update because I know at the end of the year, we were talking about some of those universal social emotional supports, and we've got them up and running, so tools are on all the kids' desks. Those are little pictures of what you would find, so the zones of regulation. As on the left, that goes with some of our curriculum, our social emotional curriculum. And then students were allowed to choose a mindfulness maze or something that helps them in particularly calm. So every student has those on their desks. And then another thing that we're working on through the ILT is we're intentionally looking at increasing our opportunities for families to connect with us and through anecdotal data and just talking with people and attendance data, it's really showing that families show up when their kids are also here. So we're looking at events for families and kids. So Arts Festival Day is going to look a little different this year. We're going to have an evening component for families and children to come in. We're looking at doing a series of family yoga sessions. We're also doing initiative that has families coming into the classroom. We're looking at least once a year and pushing for twice a year. And we're also working with UMass, so those were some of the things that we're going to share. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
This may not be well placed.
Great, bring it on.
So I just like, I love that there's this opportunities for families to come and connect with their kids. And as someone who had to miss curriculum night because I had to be home with my kids, you know, it got me really thinking about like privilege, you know, when someone doesn't have like a family member, a handful of, or babysitter. Is there something we can do maybe next year to like think about how we can like allow kids in the building and parents can go to the classrooms?
Very well-placed question because after curriculum night, I was actually talking with staff and it's going to, we're going to be working on it as an ILT of how can we switch curriculum night and make it a little different? So, very well-placed question. Yes, you'll hear some updates.
A lot of great stuff going on. Thank you. Next up, we have public comment. Anyone have a good comment? Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Update on the summer repairs and renovations projects.
So what I'm going to do is I put the other slideshow, and Mary's going to see it twice now, but I'm showing what's happened all throughout the district so people can get a sense of a lot of schools are doing very similar things and get an idea of what schools are working on and then overall what your central office is working on. And then we'll go through Deerfield, then I'll come back and talk about Deerfield a little bit in more detail about your capital projects here. So, we're going to start with Conway. They got a new video surveillance system. So basically, on each one of these, you can see how much it costs and the funding source, so as well just to kind of how different towns are getting their projects funded this year. So they got, obviously, they have a surveillance system. They have a new phone system. And I'm going to go quickly through everybody else. They are finished with their AC mini-split. All the classrooms have been done. We haven't done the, into the gymnasium in larger space like that, but they have completed that. Deerfield. A little longer conversation about this, but obviously, the kickoff is tomorrow, but we'll talk a lot about the monies and ins and outs and have a special, separate slide to talk about that because a lot of things happened there. Your AC mini-split, we were able to get to two phases of that and through town warrant and school choice. We got a new phone system. Replacing 55 phones. Again, through those for budget funding. With any year in school choice, we repaired the side entrance. That was kind of a disaster. I mean, if you picked up your child from over there, it was dirt. There's dirt, whatever, and then the, able to have a curb there to stop cars from going too far over where the children were lining up is going to increase the safety of that. We also got, in addition to your video surveillance system, to have greater coverage throughout the building and outdoors. And we use S3 money for that.
It's actual footage.
What's that?
It's actual footage.
Everything turns to a cartoon that comes through. And we have new classroom flooring. As you can see, the students enjoying, again, with any year funds. And again, we have nine more classrooms to go to complete the entire. As you know, we're doing three classrooms at a time so that we didn't use up all the capital on just one project when we have many other things to address in the building. Frontier, Frontier got a Phase 1 of a multiple four-phase roof project for just under a half million, and that was successful. Smaller stuff, they replaced some bleachers that were broken and need repair. They had their walk-in cooler because of delays in the order and it had to be done during out-of-school time. It was actually supposed to be done last summer, but they finally got it done this summer. Some painting that was high up, which is, again, sometimes when we have, it should be, someone would say painting should be a maintenance thing, but because it uses, if you use lift equipment, you got to, you know, kind of get people to come in and do it during the times that it is. We actually came in under budget. It was budgeted at $13,000, but I threw that on there because people say, "Well, that should be part of maintenance," but it's more than what our guys can do, and we have to pay more for that. And they did some tree removal as well. And along the fence of the playing fields, along the fence near the, there were a bunch of dead trees from our parking lot here going into the track area that had died for various reasons, and then over parking lots and that kind of stuff. I think, one of the more important things on there is that small things like those cost a lot of money, you know, to do tree removal around and that kind of property maintenance. Sunderland is, in their first phase, they did nine classrooms with town warrant and maintenance budgets. They had to update just similar, same thing. You can kind of see the pattern here as we kind of got the whole thing here. They had to upgrade their electricity panels in order to handle the new AC units. And this is what Ben does when he says, "Show me pictures of students in the picture in the closet." They have rotting happening over, on their ribbon banner on the entire school. They took this project, they broke it over five years, and last year, the contractor couldn't get to it based on his own schedule, so this year, we did four and five together, so that's now finished. But, you know, side jab, that's why you don't build a school out of wood. They also had replaced windows. They used ARPA money for that from the town. There was rotting around the whole windows around the front end, and the windows, you know, could no longer open and such. This one turned into a small disaster because they found asbestos in the windows halfway through the project. They had to go back to the town and ask for money during the summer, and they were able to help us out there, so with the asbestos containment and such, it came out. It was, you know, $60,000, $70,000 over budget. Wheatly, they have to do electrical upgrades. And they put six classrooms of mini-splits. They only have to do two phases if they're responsible, so they're about half done. Used ARPA money. They also cleaned their duct system. And replaced the bathroom floor, similar to how we did things here with our bathrooms. Similar, same kind of idea. We do a few bathrooms at a time so that we can spread out these projects and get multiple things done through the years. And this is just a cute picture of kids. This is just a maintenance budget doing carpet over. And through town warrant, they did three of their doors. The bottoms were rusting out so bad that the holes in the rust, critters could get through, so they had to do three doors. They're going to have to do a few more next year as well. In the middle of the summer, their fire suppression system started leaking, and we almost had a major flood in the building. Thankfully, their fire department was smart to turn off the water, and I had to go to the town in the middle of the summer to ask for money. They don't have the reserves that Deerfield has to pay for emergencies, so we were able to get the last of their ARPA money, their last call for ARPA we took to repair leaking pipes in their building. It's a dry system. I won't give them the details. It wasn't leaking yet, but as soon as it fills with water, it does. So, anyway, so going back to... I mean, I can't answer questions on anything, but... Front entryway, you know, let's do that one last. Any questions on the mini-splits?
I think we're done with this, right?
What's that?
I think we're done. We're completing.
Right. Oh, did I say two thirds?
You said phase two.
Right, oh, right. We folded money back in, two completed. We took the rebate money. They folded it back in, and so now. But the major rooms have not been, so cafeteria and the gym are not, you know. But that's a cost that we can't tempt right now.
I was about to ask, is that on the horizon? The wish list item?
It's, I think it might be on the wish list thing, but the numbers are, you know, half a million. I mean, like, it's just, it goes to, it goes up to, because of what this type of system you have to put in. You have to put a rooftop unit in. You don't have a flat roof. You know, how are you going to get, you know, that? So there's a lot of challenges on that, and we're going to have greater needs. If it gets hot enough, we can get kids comfortably in the classroom. The building itself, with this much AC happening in it, you open doors up and you can get some general cooling happening. So, you know, maybe phys ed takes the day off. We have that kind of heat.
Or the after-school program, I think. They do that a lot. I feel like I pick my kids up and they're like bright red.
They do.
They also don't stop.
I was going to say, and they do have like the music room that they go to and they can cool off, yeah.
But again, so for capital for next year, kind of my timeline is getting kind of things kicked off this year right now. Meetings are set to start looking at capital projects for next year. Tina will be meeting with Bill Hildreth to kind of go through what are operational demands, and then he's going to talk about building demands, and then I'll be bringing that to you next month and kind of go through, here's the list here of what we think the industry priorities are. Here are the costs, and then we start to figure out what we want to go to town with, what are we going to pay for? You know, what might be small enough that we can pay for either end-of-year reserve, end-of-year reserves or school choice is getting a little bit less that we can use, but that'll be happening next month, so we don't stop, so to speak. The phone system is, again, it's much needed. Working great, right, Tina?
Yeah.
I saw you on it. This was your phone.
You stopped me on it.
Turn your phone, make my phone call to somebody.
They're really impressive, so it takes a little bit to figure out how to work them.
The side entrance upgrade, they are coming back to fix the handicap ramps on the, on the, on the end so that, hey, right now, it just drops off, so someone would have to go in the grass to get out. So they're coming back to fix that. And video surveillance, again, now you're totally covered and so forth. So, we just had blind spots. We didn't talk about, probably in a meeting because I didn't want to, but we had blind spots on playgrounds where adults could approach the building, or people could approach the building, we wouldn't be able to see them, or that kind of stuff. So now, you know, we're protecting our asset and our kids better. I say asset because it's our security system. You know what I mean? Like, we know who's coming and going. If something was to break in or vandalize and was to curtail the video, but... And the ongoing classroom flooring to get our carpet to replace with removable carpets so if we have spills and whatnot, or just any of those kind of things. Went through it twice. All right, so let's talk about the front entryway. We're happy that we're at the, you know, they still have a punch list of things to do. We have to meet with them to go over it. It did not go, it did not go smooth, to say nicely, I guess. It ended up costing more than, I think originally, at least I wanted to spend. So, here I go. So, basically, just kind of reminding everybody, the bid went out in February and we awarded it in April. And the cost estimate was going to be around $185,000. And the breakdown, the base, that was the estimate. The bid came in much higher. As you can see here, the base bid was at $254,000 and a total base bid of $281,000 when you put in engineering and the bid administration. So that's where we were walking into this. All right, early on, it became clear as we did the general walkthrough with the companies as they were looking at the bid, and we put it as an add-alt, was that the turnaround for the buses, that they were going to have to cut into that asphalt to reset the granite curbs. And then you were going to have new asphalt for a foot and a half, and then you're going to have all that crummy asphalt that was deteriorating, that was puddling. There were huge puddles in the handicap parking spots, so they were getting out into puddles. So they said, you know, "We'll add it as an add-alt to the bid, and then we will go and get more money for that." So that was that. We then had to change order. As they dug up, dug the holes out, it appears that those, you know, those little light bollards, we'll call it, they used to be on both sides, but apparently, at some point, we buried them. There was no record of that, so they came upon them, so we had to get electricians out, and they had to pull... There was no record of that, so they came upon them, so we had to get electricians out and they had to pull them out and that kinda thing and make sure it was all kinda capped off appropriately and that kinda stuff. We also added thirty feet of curb in, so it went around the, so it was more complete in that area. And then, the drainage in the turnaround were these thin drains, they were all backed up, they hadn't been maintained. So your drainage, you know, all those drain bins usually are sucked out, but these were thin ones, so the town either didn't do it or didn't have the equipment to do it. And through the years, they became ignored and that's probably why we had a lot of puddling. And so, they, you know, the, many times it happens to contractors, like, you're gonna have water buildup here. So we put in two drains and we had to change the piping in order to get to those drains in the parking lot area. So you still have the rain garden that's gonna collect and slow the, the pattern of water going to, it all goes out the bloody brook. It's gonna slow that, that stream during storms and such. If it reaches a maximum point, it's gonna hit the drain and go out, but you still have, in your driveway, that water's gotta go somewhere. And so, they're putting, they put two new drains in and hopefully that will drain nicely. And so, those were the change order subalternates, which ended up getting the project up to a total of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. I did go to the town, so we'll talk about the funding of that. We started with the MDP grant for a hundred and fourteen thousand and change. That did not cover the, anything, anything that's black, so, and so basically that covered the rain gardens and, and the piping going out of that, to a degree. The Town Warrant gave us eighty thousand dollars. We were required to match the grant at thirty-seven thousand dollars and then we, the school added another fifty thousand dollars. And so, we ended up going back to the town for thirty-five thousand dollars. I went, I don't remember when, I went in June and went to the select board and asked for additional money. And Shelley, if I'm saying this wrong, jump in, I'm going off memory right here, didn't write down. But I went back to the town desk for another thirty-five thousand dollars, the select board found that for us so that we could finish that loop. Because, you know, they were talking about whether or not they're gonna get chapter ninety money because they consider it a roadway or not. I don't know how they got the money, to be honest with you, if they're end of using chapter ninety or not, but, you know, they, they, they gave us that money as well. So, in the end, this is where the funding came from, basically, you can call it a third each. And ended up being more expensive than we had originally planned. I think we have a better product in the sense of drop-off that wasn't included. Maybe we should've saw that earlier as part of the thing. We were, you know, where I said that things weren't smooth, the contractor started late, in my opinion. You know, he had a deadline to get it done by the school start and he started mid-July. And so that was a big factor into why we're doing a grant opening on Friday on it. There were a lot of other arguments happening as well with the contractor that I can't, last year in a public meeting right now because we're still sorting those details out, but I think we have to eventually, we have to go to a legislative session and discuss that kinda thing. So, there you go, questions?
Can you, I mean, I think this is more just for, like, people who aren't aware of, like, the bid process and how that works and how a, that, this particular company was selected, do you think you...
So this wasn't actually the lowest bid, it was the second lowest. The lowest bid failed to provide adequate, I think they misunderstood because they were way low, they were, I'm going off of memory, but fifty thousand though, seventy thousand though, whatever it was, it was like, whoa, what did you? And based in our communication with them, they misunderstood the details of the project. So we let them off the bid, you go to next in line, so they were the low bid, that kinda thing. They did do a previous project with us, they did the playground in Sungalen and did a decent enough job there, so. Flag of some of the concerns that we had during the project were not found during that initial. Any questions?
Well, I just have to say, it, the school is totally different, like, it, it made a huge impact and, like, I, I feel like the kids know where to go. They, like, line up and it, it, it's so much more welcoming. So I do believe that that was money we spent and I'm glad that, you know, we talked about it a couple of years maybe, like, it was, you know, I'm glad that we waited to do it the right way.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is pretty, it's the, it's one of those, like, you get to the final and you're like, ah, you know, happy it's here, but it was, it was a long trip to get there for basically what I thought was a straightforward project. There was some postings online and I wanna answer to that, but the bushes we pulled out were invasive bushes in Massachusetts and technically should not have been planted, so they were on those, the invasive plant list, so if people were like, oh, we like those bushes, I remember when they went in. You know, they were the burning bushes and the berry bushes, they are not supposed to be planted, you can't even buy them anymore because birds get them and they poop them and then they go everywhere. So, and they were pricker bushes outside of an elementary school with berries in them. So, you know, you know, hindsight is easy in our seats and that kinda thing, right? They probably were beautiful at the time, although the burning bushes are beautiful at this time of year.
The new rain garden looks great, I love little plantings and I love the wide granite benches around.
We are gonna have to look at how we maintain them and that might be a budget thing. You know, there was talk about students doing some of it, but realistically, we're gonna have to pay for major cleanouts, you know, at the end of fall season and maybe sometime mid-spring to make sure to keep it working the way it's supposed to work and not get filled up. The same thing with the one that, you saw the fence was part of the project as well. You know, so cleaning up that garden, it kinda turned into an overgrown garden as well. So, we don't currently budget for outside maintenance like that, so.
It was good to see the pivot, you know, all things considered with the project itself, the administrative pivot, the communication was really strong. So that was, I think that it came on your team really fast. We were talking a few weeks before the school started and you were starting to lose hope and so...
It was gonna be, gonna open it.
It was gonna open on time and that wasn't the case, but everyone had smiles on, there was a plan. If there was confusion, there was someone, you know, I think that was the best part, there was always a staff member nearby to assist with parents, families, whomever. And all things considered, I think that that's a silver lining and so thank you for, you know.
To extend that, hats off to the staff who did it with us and they did great with it. And, you know, we did kinda say, you know, if there was complaints, like, this was not a major problem. I mean, we could have real major problems, like going into a different door and having to work through all that. Certainly took a lot of effort, but as I was mentioning, it was certainly doable, you know.
Yeah, the community internal was fabulous with it too, there was minimal complaints. And staff really stepped up, yeah, you see them all out front, it was like a responsive classroom entry, like, everybody was out there, all hands on deck, yeah.
Yeah, you could tell from a lot of people helping, but I, I felt that first couple days drop-off went really smooth, all things considered.
I did say to Darius, ah, if we have to keep doing this for a little while, we can still do it, we got it down now.
Yeah, luckily you don't have to.
Yes, but it goes much smoother when the front doors are open.
Thanks for managing it all summer, I'm sure it added a little bit of stress to your deployment.
Thanks.
Sure. No, that's a date.
Keep going?
Yeah.
Alright, handbooks. So I sent you all a copy of, so that was a PDF version that was shared with the, the changes in it. We've since taken that version, there's another version after that that edited, there, there are some edits that, like, some name changes and that kinda stuff as we went through. But it was highlighted, it was the easiest one to share with you because it highlighted all the major changes. When you go to the handbook online, everything's hyperlinked and if you go to table content, she just click on it and it takes you exactly where you're going. So if you first look at it, you're like, whoa, this got really overwhelming for a handbook. But when people go to the handbook, they're looking for, usually for something specific. And, you know, you can click and quickly go through the handbook that way if you, if you look at it online. Handbooks are approved by school committee, so I need you to vote on it this evening. We are trying to, part of the goal of the handbook is to streamline the four elementary schools to have the same basic handbook for families. While you have to have different things for, you know, drop-off and after-school, because each school's set up differently that way, we're trying to streamline that, you know, our values and our, how we're doing things within those values, within our educational system, are consistent around all the schools and there shouldn't be four separate handbooks. And we've kind of been slowly going that way and Tina had to take the big, she put a ton of work into the last handbook and when I said, I was taking it, employing it all under one, she had to give up a lot of that big work, so thank you for growth mindset.
I happily handed it over.
But each principal is having to do the updates themselves and I have to send out, like, here's the legal, there's a legal thing, this has to be updated, this, you know. So having it all in one place is, so we're gonna see how it goes, we'll take feedback as we get it, it is kind of, that timeline was, I guess, one of my administrative weaknesses, I think things still take faster than they actually do. I was hoping to get that done by mid-July, it ended up getting done the week prior to school starting, between vacations of everybody taking and going back and forth, so, you know, we got that up kind of the last, at the last moment, so to speak. So we are gonna be going through if there's either minor edits. And then we're gonna try to streamline it even more, I didn't have a chance to be able to come back with the full draft, principals reviewed it, but as a group to kinda say, like, okay, you know, I can give in on this and change, it doesn't have to be that way in the handbook, that kinda thing, so. Hopefully it, it meets some of those needs and you can see when you go through some really positive language changes around, you know, how we, how we talk about our handbook, how we talk about the community and so forth, so.
Alright, so you were looking for a vote?
Yep.
Anyone that would like to make a motion?
Is it Deerfield Elementary, what's the title of it, what are we approving? Or is it a...
It's a Unit Frontier, Unit Thirty-Eight Handbook.
Yes, I guess I'll say, call it the Frontier Unit Thirty-Eight Handbook.
Okay, we need to approve the Frontier Unit Thirty-Eight Handbook.
Cause it has sections.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, three.
And, and just to clarify my question, the, the PDF that was sent out and had the highlighted items, any of the highlighted categories those had were changes to the content?
Correct, yes, yep, yep.
Then I second that motion.
Any further questions or discussion on that? Alright, all the favor of approving the handbook? Approved five oh? Okay, and back to Darius for some policy updates.
Oh, I gotta get Tina something to do. So you have two sections, I'll do all the policies at once if you don't mind. You have two of them and as, as you know, we try to, even though this has very little effect on the elementary school, the first one is IHBG and you have the changes in red. Basically, our old homeschooling policy has that a student with approval of school can be, may be awarded a high school diploma if she satisfies, you know, satisfies Department of Education's competency requirements, has met the district's education standard for graduation. That hasn't happened a lot, but that and they're able to participate in after-school activities, extracurricular and curricular upon approval of the superintendent. It, it more, we see it more at Frontier as you have athletics, drama program and that kinda thing, but I, I, as the person who has to make a decision on this, if it comes to, I think it really shouldn't be allowed. I think we held our students to an expectation at the school and if their educational requirements are not the same as the other people who are participating, who have to meet certain requirements in order to participate, from behaviorally to, you know, from behavior and character in the building to academic standards, while homeschoolers, families do give me reports to go through, it's very little detail as to what their academic standards are overall. It's just, it's an area of coverage, it's a very small thing, the law really gives the families full, free leeway to do what they want as long as they hit the major kinda components. And so, how does it affect the elementary school? Very little. In fact, the one thing I brought up was, it doesn't affect, like, recreation sports, that's the town rep department, you know, those kinda things, that's not associated with the school. So it may have little to no effect here, but we try to keep all our policies the same and talking about it as well, so. So anyways, it's first read, so you can think things over. And if you have questions, comments, or concerns, send them to me. The next set of, of policies, sorry, I started talking too much, is really, has to do with the change of Title IX. And so this is language that went to MASC, who usually handles the policies, and then it went to your law offices, Dupree Law Offices, Office, who's your attorney, they modified them to a couple minor details. If you kinda go through, you have to really look for the changes, but since they represent us in these type of things, they had suggestions as well. So this is their version, obviously there, it's marked throughout where the changes are, but, you know, for the camera, it's, you know, non-discrimination based of sex, non-discrimination based of gender identity, which I'll come back to, because that one's a little different. Sex and sex-based harassment retaliation, non-discrimination of basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. Sorry, I just wrote them all out. Non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation. And so these are basically the laws, the Title IX being reinterpreted into our policy. If you have heavy questions on this, try to get to me before meetings, I probably, if it's a heavy question, I probably have to talk to your attorney about why certain things are certain ways within it. But as you kinda read through it, you can kinda get the, the gist of how things were changed. I also just wanna announce that the, also with the new Title IX changes, I brought our attorney in over the summer and met with our administrative staff to go through the Title IX changes and such. And anytime we really do have a Title IX issue, we do use, use an attorney right out, right out of the gate to walk us through because it doesn't happen often and it is a very confusing law. I do wanna come back to ACAA, this one's a little bit different because this one we created. Our anti-racial inequity group last spring took on this project because the policy that read prior, you know, basically stated that we did not discriminate on the basis of gender and gender identity, but it didn't go through and really explain and the committee felt that it was really, it didn't feel welcoming for students, you know, students, you know, with their own gender, gender identity or, you know, students who may be between gender identities or, you know, fluid in that area. So if you read through it, you can see the language is really, you can see what we're saying, it's not just legal language. It says, we see you, you're respected in our community and we're here supporting you. So if you read through that, that's what it, that's what, you know, the intent of it was. As you can see, it's ACAA, so whenever you have an additional initial, it's an extension of another policy. So it goes to ACA and then this continues on there. So, we also sent it to our LGBTQ plus club in, at Frontier and had them redo it. And so we had student input on that, that student input was included and some of their input was not directly, it wasn't policy related, it was just some other ideas around that, that was great to get feedback from them. So, we were, was happy to get their, their thoughts on it as well, so. Again, that is also a first read.
Okay, so in, so you keep in, do you keep in, how do people, I understand it says Director of Student Services or Title IX Coordinator, like, will contact Title IX Coordinator. How do people find out who the Title IX Coordinator is?
So if you went to our website, you can get Title IX, if you wanna file a report, there's now a button there that you can file, file, can file straight from there and then each one has all the listings of who the Title IX Coordinator and who you'd contact if you have concerns.
So they're not just leaving a random message?
Yeah, the public would never, this is our policy, the public would never go to our, never use the word never, right? Wouldn't be going to our policy to file a Title IX report. They would go, you would go to our website, even in our handbook, it's hyperlinked to the same place, it's all kinda thing. If you had, you know, if something would happen to you or you have a complaint to make, you know, this is really, our policies are varied. You have to go into school command or policies and then it's like seventeen clicks this way. This is, you know, I think it's two, I think we try to make it two or three clicks away, so you can find it easily and it's in multiple places.
I'm happy about the process to create this policy, the A.D. committee and then getting students involved.
Yeah, and, you know, hats off to the A.D. committee that, in the sense of, it's, it's gotta work and it's, getting it done.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments on the first read? Darius, are you ready to begin? You already, keep going. You already keep going? Presentation on the design.
I did not think, like, I didn't think properly through this when I.
Then after that, you have your report. I just thought you'd be prepared.
Here's a small video or something. Snack break? So, all right, so this time of year, I usually start talking about strategic plan because we use our strategic plan to build our school improvement plans. The strategic plan that we, we have, we could continue to add to it as we have been. It's, I think it's a solid plan and it has good direction in it. It was built when I did my original onboarding. They had you do an entry plan and then you build a strategic plan from the superintendent's entry plan. So I, I did that seven years ago. And then I was in, we were in year two or three of that and then COVID hit and we kind of put the plan on hold because we weren't really making, we were, you know, we were fighting fires rather than, you know, preparing. So we're at a point now where it's time to take a good look at our strategic plan. And we want to do a year of outreach to get information from teachers, from the community, parents about goals of the school, identifying what a student portrait looks like, what a graduate portrait looks like, meaning like what do we want our students to look like? Not look like, but what they, what do they, who will they be after they go through our system? What are we trying to achieve? So the timeline I have for this, and this is kind of, not kind of, I forgot my page. By the end of the month, I'll communicate this out. And by mid-October, we will distribute a just strategic plan survey to families and staff, really asking for their input on not only how things are going and their perceptions of things, but things they like to see. Followed by that, we will do coffee and conversations and at each elementary school and Frontier. And then it was mentioned at the last meeting, it's already been updated. We're gonna do a virtual evening meeting as well to get input from people as well. We're gonna take that input with the, take that input with the surveys and we're gonna create this portrait of student success from that data. And then from that, we'll provide an update of the school committee where we're at. Then the writing team is gonna create the first draft of the strategic plan. Some parts of the strategic plan aren't new, like where we are going curriculally right now, we have a plan. Maybe we'll, we'll add to it and alter it, but there's some pillars within that. There's, it's just, you know, it's solid where our PD direction is going and that kind of stuff. Maybe we'll, you know, dress it up a little bit with some things, but I'm just very interested to see what, you know, what feedback we get. The writing team will create a plan. We'll do a spot analysis in early spring. A spot analysis is just a formal way of looking at strength and weakness and opportunities and threats. Within a plan, we're gonna send it back to school councils to look at and teacher groups to look at. And then we'll bring it back to the school committee to share, kind of get feedback on. We'll have the joint meeting timing wise. And then if it's ready to go, it'll be ready to go for the following school year. If it goes back for more revisions, we, we'll see where we're at. This feedback is also, you know, it's, the way I was looking at it, if you look at strategic plans and how they're done in many districts throughout the state, it's, it's, there's a full range. Sometimes they hire consultants to do it. They pay a lot of money for someone to come in and, and, and kind of set up how to do it and that kind of thing. Basically, it's about getting feedback from the community and taking the feedback and your own data and, and putting it through. I wanted to create something that is, I mean, there's three people running this. It's Sarah, Mitchell, you know, Laura Ramsey and myself. Something that's manageable, but also gets the goals of trying to get feedback and that kind of thing. And so that's kind of where the, kind of the goal is there. The administrative team also calls the principals, so we met during the summer at one of our, we call it a retreat, but it's in Roman school, so I don't know if we, we call it a retreat. But we talked about our current strategic plan and we just felt like it was need to, to get an injection of life and nobody really knows what's in it. And so this is kind of getting community feedback and that kind of stuff. So like I said, this is also, the strategic plan's a living document, so we have the, we can change it from year to year. But you want to have your courses set of where you're going. And this plan to develop it is also a living document. Like I said, we've already changed it since the last meeting where school committee gave some thoughts on how to, you know, again, the virtual night, which was a no-brainer, but we didn't have it on there to get people who can't attend the coffee thing. Yeah, that's the, the plan.
Are we able to ask a question about the, the strategic plan process? Because it all sounds great and I think the, the strategy for community, sort of solicitation of feedback is a good one. The, I'm just curious how our past strategic plan, what the challenges were for getting some things implemented. But what's the success rate did we have with the goals that were put in there? And so I'm just trying to kind of look at the execution of it.
Sure.
So, so that while we're doing this planning work, we can kind of set ourselves up for success.
Right, so when you look at the strategic plan, think of it like it's the, the top plan, right? And then from in it, you're gonna have, what's gonna fall on your equity plan? Were you doing it for your equity work, your professional development plan and your curriculum plan? So all those things, like we kind of mentioned, like when we went back into the equity audit, that was in our strategic plan to do a dive into that. Ended up creating, and it was in there to create that. So challenges are, it's all about, you know, resources, time is probably the biggest thing. We have, we have the people and that kind of thing, but it's the time and interruptions where somebody else becomes a bigger, bigger need. And so, you know, priorities jump within our strategic plan. We made pretty good progress and I can share with you last year's strategic plan. It's a, it's a, it's a public document, obviously. And I'll do that so you can kind of go through and see what I'm talking about. But we basically have what we're working on, how we're gonna do it and what the expected timeline of getting it done was responsible for it. And so when you see through, you'll get an idea that like it, it's, I think it was a solid plan and it moved us. But it didn't have the public input into it. It was created by me in a vacuum and then, then principals kind of added to it and then, but then we modified it out of COVID. We kind of came up with our, kind of our own emergency relief plan of our own plan to kind of get people back on board, or the kids back and going, so.
And part of the process, we do assess like where we are with all of the goals in there. We did that over the summer and checked to see like, do we need to keep that still on there? Are we making good progress or are we done with that? So it's not like we didn't complete it or we didn't meet any of our goals. They're kind of ongoing. Does that make sense?
No, it makes complete sense. It's, it's one of those things where you, you want to thread the needle of having that big picture, but it has to be manageable to your point and not just a document that's pie in the sky, sitting on a desk somewhere. And so it's, as many, as many ways that we can kind of trickle it into existing communication channels and the hierarchy of, of command, then that way it just gets pushed out at every, every kind of.
Hundred percent agree. And we do, we do a lot of reverse design on that. So you could have something coming like, we're working on their, in our I L T meeting, this came out as a plan. Then it got moved up to like, we're gonna put that in our stream, school improvement plan. I'm like, well, you might as well put it all the way up and have that added. So because then that's just kind of naturally how some of those things are. And we're a small enough district, you know, maybe you're a district with like twelve schools. Like you have to be very clear, but we, you know, we're a very tight district that, and because we're smaller, we can change things from year to year, you know what I mean? And you also have to be careful, you don't change things too much, everybody thinks you're just bouncing around. So you want to have something stable, but, but we definitely done a lot of reverse design on stuff.
Just one more note on the portrait of a graduate. The Springfield Public Schools did this model and they have a good website with a lot of pre-made content that might be worthwhile, looking at a lot of, I know it's a completely different school district, but their, the goals are essentially the same, you know, what is, what is the vision for our students when they, when they leave our school system and so, just some good food for thought there.
Yeah, you know, definitely in the idea of the portrait of a graduate, the portrait of, you know, we want to use portrait of a student for elementary because the portrait of a graduate, because portrait of a graduate might be a little bit too, too distant in people's minds. But it's, it's all, it's what's going on across the state.
I've been to a preschool graduation here.
That's right, yeah, so there you go. You're like, I'm done. Success, graduated.
It's a different portrait.
Start. Still looking for that first red check. All right, thank you.
Sarah, no other questions?
I was gonna give a tiny break.
Okay, I'm gonna take one sentence. We'll move on. There's another question, I'll move on to reports. I just want to say thank you to everyone who came to the professional development session slash learning, sharing knowledge. I thought it was really well attended. I hope it was helpful to people. And if anyone has feedback on things they would like to see included, if we do this again in the future, I'm all ears. That's all I have. Collaborative report. I understand there has not been any meeting.
Collaborative has not met yet, so the report is, the first meeting is next week.
That's an easy report. And after you, Darius.
The good news is, I basically went through everything and I put those hyperlinks of this stuff that I showed tonight in my report. I did want to mention, as I've mentioned to the other school committees, that ballot question number two, just so that you are aware of it, is to eliminate MCAS as a graduation requirement. You know, it came through my association to make sure to get the word out that there's a lot of confusion out there about it, that it's eliminating MCAS. And when MCAS is not being eliminated, the state, it's just so you know this as school leaders, if you don't already know. You know, MCAS is a federal requirement that we need to receive federal funds, that you have an assessment of students. What they're trying to do with this ballot question is to remove it as a graduation requirement. So it will be, whether or not it passes or if it, if they remove it as a graduate requirement, your students in this district will still be taking the MCAS for years to come. To overcoat, if they're gonna change MCAS and how it's being done, there's a lot of talk even from, I guess, from all professional associations to make it better. That's certainly out there, but I just want to make sure people understood that because if you start having conversations like, yeah, MCAS stinks, I don't want to, you know, the kids shouldn't have to do that. Kids are still gonna have to do that. It's just not gonna be a right graduation requirement. And it has not been a, if you look at the statistics, it's about seven hundred students in the state a year who don't pass the, do not pass it in order to graduate. They may fail their sophomore year, but the school then works on, working with the student to, to make up tests and portfolios and that kind of thing to get them through. In my seventeen years at Frontier, there's only been one student who's not made it through. And there were outstanding circumstances attached to that. That was not the, within the school's ability to help. So just kind of saying that out there, it doesn't really affect our district much, but because someone will say, well, does it stop people from, you know, graduating your district? No, we, we're able to get, we have a pretty solid program and we get the kids through. It also has to do with demographics as well and attendance and that kind of thing.
Has Dusty decided not to move forward with social studies?
What's that?
With the MCAS, the social studies MCAS?
Yeah. They brought on the, yeah, I think they did, yeah. That's it for me.
All right. Any other comments? No one has anything else to add? Oh, I would just like to say thank you for these. If no one has anything else, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn.
I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned at four, six oh four?